Did that return season?
I know, but then it was gone. So, it's on now.
Okay, very good. We have light.
We have a light.
Good evening. This is our regularly scheduled meeting of January 20th, 2015, the Town Council. Stoffey, if you could lead us in a pledge.
..........................................
Delores.
Counselor Hemmend?
Here.
Counselor Hurley is not here yet. Counselor Cocken?
Here.
Counselor Manusos?
Here.
Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Ral?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Vary?
Here.
Then Mayor Montanari.
Here, thank you, Delores. There are no hearings this evening, so we can move right into public comment. Anybody wishing to speak this evening? In public comment. Mr. Young, first up, and you've got the mic.
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Coppermill Road. Full house again, Mayor.
Too much excitement.
Boy, you start the year off right, don't you?
You'd think this place should be packed with all the problems we have and all the money
that's going all different directions, you know? Talking about money. You see the governor's honchos and pals and buddies up there all came out with some pretty decent raises just recently, as well as the Yukon President, Susan whatever her name is. She got a nice compensation hike, sounds to me, and also the systems administrators for the colleges, another big hike. Sounds like business is doing very well in this state. Sounds like everybody's doing great. It sounds to me like the George W. Bush, if you remember when he was out on that aircraft carrier, mission accomplished. Everybody was happy and everything was fantastic. Business didn't even start at that point in Iraq, did it? We still have that kind of problem here, too. People up there are getting raises left and right. Citizens are being hammered, and of course, here we are, looking at higher budgets all the time. Last week at the Board of Education meeting, I heard that they wanted, what, a 3.8 percent increase? You know? And all the great things that they do and all the accomplishments that they have made. And there's so many things that just stick out that are bad, yet people get accomplishments for doing nothing and for doing less than nothing. That includes our Board of Education. That includes those people we have up at the state capitol. And they all get big fat raises. They all end up costing us tremendous amounts of money. And we get, the workers get zip. So, you know, I'm reading about this reset for the budget that's coming up. It sounds to me like serious problems are coming along. And I know we depend so much, Mayor, on their budgets and that they take care of things And we get hammered. There's been numerous times when I've spoke, we shouldn't be paying taxes, income taxes to the state of Connecticut. We should be paying taxes to our local town for what we need to run our town and not ask for any handouts from that state of Connecticut that's heading down bankruptcy court pretty We don't, we should be collecting the tax from our citizens. We should only be giving them what we think they are worth. And I would vote give them very little because they're not worth anything up there. We throw so much money up there, they give it away to all their pals and buddies. We do some of that here, too. But I think here at this level, we can at least scream and talk about it. Up there, they don't want to hear from us. But now this resetting of the budget that the governor now is talking about, I know the old term was reforecast your budget, but to reset your budget is serious business. I've never heard that, to reset. So I don't know what's going on up there. I mean, I know his budget, I mean, his ability to borrow has been hampered. He's gone beyond his limits. He keeps borrowing because the idiots, the commissioners or whatever you want to call them on the bond commission say, "Oh, but those are good projects. So what if we go over the limit?" They're good projects. They're good managers, aren't they? What did I tell you about them a few minutes ago? If they were, I don't know how they stay in business up there, but I know you had this article in the paper about the small towns are going to be now pulled into this web of maybe, maybe reductions. And when those reductions happen, you have two choices. You either cut your costs or raise our taxes. And I hope you would consider cutting your costs. Because raising taxes, we have a lot of problems out across the countryside here in Weathersfield. We have a lot of homes that are on the edge. We've got tax sales now. Many towns now have tax sales, which I've never heard of before, but I've been hearing and reading more of these. And throwing people out of their home is just not a nice thing to do. I mean, I understand we all have to pay our taxes, but our taxes keep going up and up and up so fast. It falls back on the administrators who have been raising those taxes. You have been pushing people out of those homes. Not in every case, I'm sure. But in slot, I'm sure in some cases, you have overtaxed those people beyond their means and you haven't even considered their means. And over the years, I've talked about how we have to be considerate and hold our taxes down, and you didn't do that. And then, and then we hear about these increases with gas tax. Mr. Murphy, our state, whatever he is, Representative State Senator, he now wants to increase our gas taxes at the federal level. I mean, where does it all end? They've got so much money that comes in, but they spend and send out so much more than what they bring in. And they live so far beyond their means, just like Weathersfield is beyond its means. Every time you turn around, you've got to go borrow money. Every time you turn around, you're looking for a grant. You're like looking for a grant from an organization up in Hartford that's heading for bankruptcy. You're, in a sense, saying to them, "We approve of all your crazy spending and crazy borrowing that you're doing up there." Every time you accept a grant, and every town should be saying no to these grants. Because your old term, money grows on trees? We all know that money doesn't grow on trees, Mayor. And somewhere, it has to come to a halt. Lock boxes. Lock boxes for the highway fund. What a joke that is. You know, I mean, our guys up there in Hartford come up with the greatest ridiculous plans, and who would listen to them anyway? They're a bunch of bankrupt people. They're morally bankrupt and they're financially bankrupt to the state that they represent. Then we have our schools, constantly going up. No way of holding back on their costs. And I hope that this, in this budget season, you will do something about that. There's no end. There's no end to the cost they keep making classes smaller or holding them smaller. Make them larger. We brought in the new, what do they call it, pre-kindergarten last year, but no consideration for what's happening in the next number of years going forward with money. Did they plan on Mr. Malloy coming in with this plan that he may cut us back and in turn something has to happen? No, they didn't think about any of that. That's just the way they are. And now we're hearing about all this free college for students that want to go to community colleges. And I wonder about those people who paid for their own children to go to colleges and got nothing. How are they going to take it? I just read on the Internet where some young couple paid off all their bills, ninety-seven thousand dollars or something, and in a very short time, which included payments for their student loans. How do they think, how do you think they're going to feel when they see all these others stepping up to the plate and getting it all free? And what is really the whole reason for that? Extend the high school because the kids are not getting educated enough to make it going forward. I know, I know, I'm running beyond. But the thing is, why should we continue spending this kind of money when we're, when the buck, we're not getting any bang for our buck? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Okay. We'll move on to council reports. Are there council reports this evening? Jeff Cocken?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of them. One, Insurance Committee met. The trending on health care, we're still trending a bit above budget, about seventy-two thousand dollars in deficit through the first half of the year. So if that continues, we won't be seeing sort of the flat year-over-year changes in health care costs that we've had the last couple of years, which has really helped us out. So I've got to keep monitoring it. And it's not a matter of having a lot of large claims. It's, I guess there's just a lot of claims and not, not many of them terribly large. That's number one. Number two is the Kirma, who handles our liability auto property as well as our workers' comp policies, will be coming in in February to meet with the Insurance Committee. Trend on workers' comp still isn't that great. You know, we've seen some fifteen percent increases in recent years. Trend on liability auto and property is quite good. Where the claims are quite low there. So we've seen good trends there, not so good trends on workers' comp, but we'll hear more from Kirma on February. The Budget and Finance Committee met with our auditors. I guess it was, I guess it was last week, no, or the week before. This is the annual meeting between Blum Shapiro, our auditors, and the Budget and Finance Committee. Mayor joined us, as well as the town manager and our finance director. Good news is that the, Jeff and his staff and Mike O'Neill and his staff got very good, got very good reviews from our auditors, very, very strong controls. They had a few suggestions. One is maybe having a tip line, which some other organizations, some private employers have for people who want to report potential problems. And another is a comprehensive fraud assessment, which I think the town's looking at. There were, there were more issues on the Board of Ed side. And this, the, I guess the most significant issues had to do with the accounting for some grants. And the auditors identified some significant deficiencies, which isn't the worst. The worst would be material weaknesses, but they are, they are something that caused the committee to take notice. And we are, there's been communications with the board. Mayor, I know you've, you've been in communications with the superintendent about it and the budget. And I asked the Budget Committee of the Council meet the Finance Committee of the Board. And I think we're going to do that in a week or two, sometime, I think the 28th, Jeff? To go, to go through the findings. So it, that's, it does happen, but it's not typical, it's not a typical finding in an audit. And especially with the town having just sold 22 million of bonds and probably going to be selling another 20 million over the next couple of years for the high school. We want to make sure that any weaknesses that we might have are taken care of. So, so that meeting's coming up. So that's, that's it. I don't know if you have anybody?
Yeah, I'm just going to add a little bit to it as a follow-up on the audit results with respect to the deficiency. So obviously, we met with them and Jeff Bridges and Mike O'Neill, who attended as well. We consulted with them a little bit afterwards about that because I think Jeff Cocken, who's been on council for many years, myself, we had not seen a deficiency like that before, wanted to get guidance on what that meant and how we should proceed and be certain that we took, you know, the appropriate action in the most serious tone as required. So I spoke with the board chairman and then the superintendent of schools about it and asked for a specific plan of action or response from the superintendent on it since it was, you know, an unusual event, if you will. I got a very strong response from Mike Emmett in writing yesterday, which we'll, we'll forward on to the council so they can see that. It has a specific course of action to ensure that the deficiency not only gets addressed, which it already has, the correction has been made with respect to the funding and posting of the funds on the grant, but also corrective action in probably what would be determined as professional redevelopment and retraining to ensure it doesn't happen again. So his response, I thought, was, was pretty strong, pretty powerful. We, I also spoke with other members of the board as well, past Gina. And I think the meeting next week will allow us to meet with the finance and budget from both sides, along with the auditors who are going to attend, along with Mike O'Neill and Jeff Bridges. So we will have, hopefully, a very thorough conversation with, with a follow-up to what was provided by superintendent to me today, yesterday, rather. So, you know, obviously, we, we see this for what it is, a concern, no question. The auditors were pretty candid with us about, about the language of the deficiency. And so we're taking a pretty assertive role to ensure that a course of action is placed before us as a council, since ultimately, the accountability for the audit results lies with the council. And we want to be sure that any, any risk of a future issue can be basically aborted now by virtue of the immediate work. So we'll, we'll continue, of course, to keep the council informed on our steps in that regard. So, and I appreciate particularly Jeff Bridges and Mike O'Neill's efforts to help identify the concern and assist the auditors in getting it resolved. So enough said at this point, but I will assure you that we will keep the council and the board, as well as the public, informed on our progress on that. Thank you, Jeff.
Other council reports?
I've got a question. Can you explain what the deficiency is?
Specifically on this deficiency, yeah. And I don't know if, did all the council members get this report? This specific report identified two deficiencies. They focused in on grant funding at the federal and state level that is provided annually to the Board of Education for a variety of project work. And the deficiency that was specifically identified indicated that in the particular fiscal year, there was an overspend in two of the grant areas by virtue of posting that had to be corrected in the following fiscal year to correct for that overspend. And it looked to be, as you, as we reviewed it from the report provided by the auditors, which was sort of a forensic look at it, is that it was a careless posting of overspend during one fiscal year that they had to correct by virtue of depletion the following. And it's somewhat unusual, obviously. It pointed to, you know, basically a concern about how grant funding was being tracked on an annual basis. And the overspend, even though it was within the parameters of their operating budget, suggested some, some checks and balances were not being properly monitored. So, you know, it was concerning. Our eyebrows were up, the auditors' eyebrows were up. They certainly communicated, I thought, assertively to the board and the administration on the board's side about this, and then, of course, to us as well, the report. So they did say they had no concerns about it repeating, and certainly, we've heard from the board that they expect no repeat. But I don't know if that fully answered your question, Stoffey.
Yeah, so that was one, was there two?
Well, two in the same vein with two different grant programs. And I think the total overspend was about 102,000, but it was also within the parameters of the grant, so there was only about a $7,000 correction on the operating budget at the end of the day because it crossed over grant years, which they were able to correct. And there's, I'm sure more detail than that, but certainly within the context of the audit report. And I suspect when we meet next week with the board and drill into it a little bit so we can make sure, I know for myself, I'm interested in hearing quite a bit more about the detail of it so I can fully comprehend what happened. I walked away from the meeting and the auditors' report before speaking with the board thinking, "I really want to make sure I understand exactly what happened here because it's fairly complicated, the paper trail." So I think we'll be able to hear, you know, quite a bit more of the detail behind the mosaic next week. But my intent at the end is to be assured, not only by the documentation I got from Mr. Emmett yesterday, but I suspect the Finance and Budget Committee of the board, along with our people, and certainly Mike O'Neill and Jeff, we're going to want to feel at the end of the day, we've really ensured that we've got our arms around it so that it doesn't occur again. And, and I, one of the things they reference is there's been some staff turnover there in the economic and finance area the last two years, so there might be some additional training needs to make sure they're tracking some of the postings more accurately in the future. And I think some of that's already been tackled, but this occurred in 13 in the first case. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, if I could, I would just add a couple of things. Jeff, we should probably post that as a public meeting, just in case any council members want to come so we're not, we don't have an issue. And also, we have asked the auditors to return to town for this meeting as well.
Don, you were, I'm sorry.
Just, I attended the Weathersfield Housing Authority meeting on the 12th. They're looking at pursuing a 501(c)(3) potentially, and looking at that as a mechanism for long-term planning on their part to help sustain that organization. So they continue to explore that and work through that process. And that was about it. And I had a little glitch with the scheduling for the Shade Tree Commission, but that's it.
Tony, thank you.
Two commissions met that I'm lays on to. First was Economic Development Commission. The new business directory, Weathersfield, our shop, weathersfield.biz, is up and running with over 400 local businesses listed. So people can go online and see businesses in town, what they can do, and they can pinpoint if they need something, to go and get the right person in town to shop locally. The EDIC Marketing Subcommittee is working on a site called Y Weathersfield, where prospective businesses and/or residents can go to see what is available and help them in making their decision as to why they should move here and/or set up their business here. So it'll be a good thing for them to do. They're looking at something with a front page with clicks to go to links to various things, so you can see what organizations are here, churches, what's available staff-wise, bank-wise, whatever. So, I mean, it's going to be real nice. So, you know, they're doing this with links so they don't have to reinvent the wheel. And we discussed the State of the Town Breakfast that will be held at Bikini Center on January 29th at eight o'clock in the morning. People can register for that through the Chamber of Commerce website. Also, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee met last week, and they're starting to plan for their spring fair, which will be held on May 21st at the Community Center. They also said that, I don't know if you've driven down Knott Street lately, but on the corner of Knott and Wilken Hill, the stop sign there, besides being the bright red, the pole coming down, two now is bright red, and the crossing guard happened to be at the commission meeting. And he says it's really helped people realize there's a stop sign there and slow down, and they were happy with that. They had talked to Mike Turner about getting more signs done that way, but there's federal guidelines on where they can go, so I guess we'll be looking at that when, when we can to put those in. And also, they received a pamphlet, which I'll just make everybody aware of out there, that there is a property tax relief program for the elderly and totally disabled. There are income criteria for considerations. Copies of the brochures can be obtained from Chris Taylor and Social and Youth Services. And also, I say check the latest senior center news for upcoming bus trips planned for March through June. They're planning some nice trips for the seniors to be able to go to places and get away for the day.
Thank you, Tony. Chair.
Yes, the Youth Advisory Board met last two weeks ago, and this board has started to become very, very active. A lot of new members on it. In fact, we're appointing a under-21 member tonight. They reported that the Friday Night Hangout, which is a program for sixth graders in town, which has been started on a pilot basis this year, was a great success in the fall, and it's starting again. That's every other Friday night at the Community Center, and this year, it's just for Hamner and Highcrest students, but next year, they hope to expand it. They are averaging 70 kids a night, and 98 registered, and their average attendance is 70. They play games, they have pizza, and it's been a big success. The Crossroads Program after school will be starting up again at the middle school, probably under a new name, something more catchy. And they're planning for a youth volunteer recognition, recognition night on Thursday, May 7th. More information will be coming out about that. And then tomorrow night is the first meeting of the Memorial Day Parade Committee for the upcoming Memorial Day Parade. If anyone has any input or interest in suggestions, let me know. And Jeff, could you start listing the Youth Advisory Board on the, that's the only thing that ever gets listed on the, listed meetings in the manager's report?
I'll make sure we get that, those dates.
Thank you.
Irish Dinner Saturday, correct?
Yes, the, and since Mike Hurley isn't here, I'll report on that. The, every year, there's a huge St. Patrick's Day Parade in Hartford, and each town that participates has to contribute significant money because the parade costs probably $50,000 to operate. So this Saturday night at the Community Center, there's a fundraiser, and we're honoring Gene Freeman, who started an Irish music program at the Weathersfield Academy of the Arts, and also Officer Eric Knapp, who's the Irish Person of the Year for his contributions and volunteerism in town. So it should be a good night. I think it's pretty much a sell-out, but if anyone needs a ticket, you can call Mike Hurley.
Thanks, Chair. Other council reports?
I did attend the Building Committee meeting last Monday. The project obviously continues to move forward. The new additions, the band, choral, and gym have been turned over. Reports have been generally very positive on that. The girls' basketball, I believe, played a game last week. There was a wrestling match last week, and then the, the first basketball game is going on, boys' basketball is going on as we, as we speak right now. So to the extent folks can get out and see some events, you can also check out the, the new additions. And the, the project also is obviously moving now to the interior, to the old sections as well, including the, including the auditorium, which has been demoed. And there is a very good update on the, on the board event website with pictures and such, and they've been doing that relatively frequently. So obviously, this is a, a project that there's been a lot of milestones recently, and it continues to progress forward.
Great. Thank you, Deputy. Counselor comments? Tony?
Just wanted to say, last Friday, I went down to Physical Services. One of the senior maintainers down there, Sal Cancelieri, retired after 20-some years. Sal worked in the parks maintenance section, and he oversaw a lot of the projects for maintaining our parks and sports fields in town, keeping him in good condition. So we wish Sal well in his retirement and don't be sorely missed because he did a lot of good stuff for the town.
Thank you, Tony. I'm sure Sal appreciates that. Don?
Just received, Jeff Cocken and I received an email, which I did forward out to the other counselors, and just wanted to read it into the record, and it's in regards to one of our council agenda. and just wanted to read it into the record, and it's in regards to one of our council agenda items. We're about the presentation for Main and Church Street Intersection Project. And it says, it's from Mr. Arthur Leroy. For your consideration, I submit that a request as to Council Agenda B(c)(3). My request is that you ensure proper consideration. Design for bicycling the Main and Church Street Intersection has been included, and that the project plan include the design references utilized. And the background, he does cite the Old Weathersfield Master Plan, the Old Weathersfield Revitalization Study, and the two thousand and thirteen Plan of Conservation and Development. There have been also a number of internal commission and committee meetings and discussions on the subject of Main and Church Intersection Project. These discussions are often alluded to but not clearly stated within the commission and committee minutes. EDIC is particularly poor in this regard. The town manager and EDIC director have been referring to a schedule of public meetings to be firmed up soon. For several years, I'm still waiting. Arguably, this agenda item is a public meeting. The lack of information transparency leaves me frustrated with the town administration. This is a subject of another discussion. My concern is that the intersection design process to date has not fully, has not fully considered bicycle aspects. My impression, see earlier paragraph, "Lack of Information," is that the focus has been on the motorized versus pedestrian design. I'm sure you have witnessed increased bicycle usage in Weathersfield and bicycling as a tourist, commercial attraction to the town. And then referred to other websites and also a blog. And I will forward, this is from, actually from Steve Randall, I'm sorry. And Dolores, I'll forward it to you so you can add it to the notes.
Thank you, Don. Other comments, Tony?
Just a comment to add what Donna had to say. The public hearing on that will be a week from Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at seven o'clock. Mike, is that here in the council chambers? So that will be brought up, and anybody's welcome out there to come that night and give their opinions as to how it should be done. But they've got a finalized plan for everybody to look at that night, that we're getting tonight for an overview.
Mike?
Just real quick, I know everybody's excited that D and D Market hopefully will be coming very soon and opening up at the former Bliss Market site. But for those of us in Old Weathersfield, we do have the old, Old Weathersfield Country Store that opened recently. I've taken my kids there, and it's a very nice, small little shop for people in Old Weathersfield to, to get local produce. They're doing a great job, and glad to see that building being utilized as a, as a little market. Right, two twenty-one Main Street. It's good to have them in town. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Other comments? Two quick things, just, Tony mentioned the State of the Town Breakfast, which is next Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at Bikini. The state delegation members will be attending and speaking, as well as myself and town manager. We'll be talking, obviously, about several variations of what's happened in town in the last year, but also a follow-up to last year's breakfast. We had what we called a new business initiative through DECD, and Ron Angelo, who was Deputy Commissioner, came and did a full presentation last year. He's actually going to be returning to give some results of some of the efforts that were done last year, some of the specific applications that were submitted. So we'll get a little bit of an update, and hopefully an opportunity for anybody who might be interested to also apply because it's an open opportunity on a regular basis. So it's open to the public, and coverage, of course, not only council and elected officials, but members of our community. Secondly, you'll remember we had some coffees with the mayor early last year that went for a couple of months. We are finally getting a schedule, and I will get to Dolores by the end of the week, a schedule of dates and locations starting in February. I've asked members of the council to pick dates so that we could divide it up a little bit so everybody could get a date that might work for them, as well as time. The locations we're going to work out, Dolores and I. But we'll have that hopefully posted on the town website early next week. And of course, any member of council is welcome to attend, and we look forward to getting some public input on a range of items, as well as open discussion with any resident who has an interest in talking with members of our council. So stay tuned for that hopefully next week on the town website. Anything else? Okay. Jeff?
I think y'all pretty much covered it. So we'll, we have, I do have some comments regarding Mr. Randall's letter, which I'll save for the agenda item when it comes up, so.
Anything, Dolores, that you're in?
Uh, no.
Okay. We will move into council action. There are no unfinished business items. We've got some appointments. Deputy Mayor?
First, there's a correction to the January fifth, two thousand and fifteen appointments with regard to the Human Rights and Relations Commission. Move to delete Michelle Lavoy, Ten Adams Lane, and replace with Michelle Ann Lavoy, sixteen Westwood Road. The date, January five, two thousand and fifteen, to six thirty, two thousand and sixteen. To the Municipal Agent for Children, Erica Texera, five oh five Silvestine Highway, one twenty, two thousand and fifteen, to six thirty, two thousand and fifteen. To the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Chris Skoronic, Center Point Community Church, eight forty Silvestine Highway, one twenty, two thousand and fifteen, to six thirty, two thousand and sixteen. And to the Youth Advisory Board, Rachel Bahuth, eighty-nine Hangdog Lane, January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to six thirty, two thousand and eighteen.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Deputy. We're moving on to three A. Transfer of CIP funds from drainage improvements to oil collection. Do we have a motion?
Motion to reallocate fifty thousand dollars in the capital improvement project from the Murphy Pond project to the high school stormwater treatment device project.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Mike Turner, town engineer's here to answer any detailed questions. But as you know, we're, we are in the process of decommissioning a tank that sits underneath the high school, and we've become aware that that tank has leaked for some time. And part of the closure requirements of the DEEP is that we put some type of collection system in the stormwater system to collect any residual oil that may leak out of the soil that hasn't already. That's going to be a town cost, a CIP cost, not a cost of the renovation project. We've identified some funds in the existing capital budget that we can move to pay for such a device, and we're requesting the authorization, move those funds, and design and bid that project. Mike, if there's anything more?
Thank you. You nailed it. Mike, I know this goes back to when we saw, obviously, some open oil, obviously, down there from the area from the construction. Has that stopped, to your knowledge, or at least slowed down?
It, it's slowed down. We, it's probably, you know, one percent of what, of what it was. What seems to happen is when we get a heavy rainstorm or when the ground is really saturated, it's picking up groundwater either through footing drains or curtain drains or some kind of foundation drains, and saturating the soil and carrying with it, you know, residue, residue of oil that ultimately goes out that pipe towards, towards winter green wood. So this, this is the perfect opportunity for us to be able to capture both, you know, parking lot runoff and what have you, as well as this particular oil, and DEEP thought it was a great idea.
And what's the status on getting the tank pumped out and then, you know, obviously sealed and abandoned? Is that done?
The tank is completely pumped out. Soil samples were taken through the sides and the bottom of the tank. They actually drilled a hole through, and the soil underneath there is essentially relatively clean. So it's, in other words, any, any petroleum products are below what would be regulated levels. So right adjacent to the tank, we're good. But still somehow, you know, through some underground paths that we would never, never be able to get to under the building through, again, foundation drains and curtain drains and what have you that exist, some oil is still reaching out to that outfall. Now, we currently have, you know, spill protection booms and what have you that we're periodically checking and monitoring and, and changing out. So it's just, every, every once in a while, something will show up.
So this will be a permanent oil separating, a device at the base before winter green. But once this is, you don't anticipate this being forever needed, it's just a
Yes, this will be a permanent drainage structure, just like the catch basin. And it will, it will pick up any sand, silt, sediment off the parking lots, as well as oil and grease that runs off from both the parking lots and from these pipes that are connected.
Mike, why, I'm sorry, are you done, Paul?
Yes, go ahead.
So why is this a CIP project again and not part of the, the school project?
We, we looked at this as, as an opportunity. We have, we have in the CIP this exact type of structure that was originally proposed for the Murphy Pond Dam project at the inlet to that Murphy Pond Dam. And that project has been stalled, you know, due to lack of state reallocation of, of bond money to get that project rolling. So essentially, we have a fifty thousand dollar, you know, for this exact same type of device in another project that's not currently being used. So that's, that's why the recommendation to just reallocate the funds.
So if we did use it though as a school, part of the school project, would that be, would that qualify for some reimbursement?
No, we would, we would do this as, as a town project, as essentially, it's like an off-site improvement.
Where does it go, Mike? Is it?
It's, it's a buried structure, similar to the size of a septic tank. And where we're proposing to locate it is between the track and the left field of Esposito Field. So outside of any of the athletic facilities, but accessible off of one of, one of the walking paths. So they do have to be maintained every three to five years. You gotta, you know, suck them out and what have you.
Other questions? Don?
Talked about in our materials, the, the state bond funds that have been available or there, not removed, I guess, is the right word. Do we have any more information about where they are in the pipeline of getting released? Because those were part of money set aside as matching funds for projects in the McBroom and McBride study?
Yes.
Do we have any news about? I know that you've talked to our representatives. Is there any update?
We, we've put together a packet of information based upon what the DEEP was looking for, and we've submitted it through our, our local representation to work with DEEP to, to do this reallocation. But that's where it is.
It's, it's in the state's hands.
Yeah, and we have about a hundred and eighty thousand is matching?
We have a hundred and eight, we have a hundred and eighty-eight. The state has close to a million.
And these are bought out, they're just going back to the eighties.
That's correct.
Other questions about this, Jerry?
Where is Murphy Pond again?
Murphy Pond is off of Copper Mill.
Is this connected with, is this the one that goes by, on Clover, Cloverdale?
No.
Where on Copper Mill is it?
Between Carriage Hill and Copper Mill. It's a pond that
Okay, all right, okay. And the, how much is the, the total? The fifty thousand isn't going to take care of the whole cost though, right?
We, we haven't sized the project yet. I'm, I'm figuring that we should, you know, basically reallocate the entire funds, and then we can see the best, you know. I, I don't have a, a final design or a cost estimate of the structure, but we are figuring fifty thousand at Murphy Pond, and it's going to be a similar, similar structure.
Mike, Rob?
Kind of follow up on Jerry's question. How long has the Murphy Pond Dam project been on the CIP?
When was that study done?
Study was done in ninety-five.
Okay.
As our recommendation. And then we ultimately hired the engineering firm. Engineering firm went bankrupt, and we hired a replacement engineering firm to kind of pick up the plans and recertify them.
So for twenty years, though, we've had silt and debris and oil and grease and
Yes.
runoff. Going now, it's still going to continue going into Murphy Pond?
Yes.
Did, back twenty years ago, did the engineers determine if there was any type of an environmental, serious environmental impact back then that maybe we've let go?
I'm, I'm sure twenty years ago, you know, this, this was on the radar screen, but it wasn't a requirement, nor, nor is it a specific requirement right now. Okay? It's just, you know, it's the right thing to do. And Murphy Pond, the, the unit would be used more for road salt and sediment than it would be for oils, oils and grease.
Gotcha.
Because that pond has silted in over the years, and there's no way, there's no access point to get in there to be able to, to keep things clean.
Gotcha.
Current, current designs, they, what they do is they'll put what, what's known as a four bay or a smaller pond where the pipes come in, let everything settle out there, and then kind of overflow into the big pond so that you do have an access point to clean it. Murphy Pond doesn't have that, that type of physical access to be able to get an
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't the grease or oils or anything.
No, no. Murphy Pond, it was intended more for
Silt.
For silt and sediment. And again, that, that was our recommendation to the Capital Improvement Committee that, you know, once we dredge this thing out, we don't want to keep doing this, you know, every five years. We want to have an ability to, to address it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mike? Okay. We have a motion to second. Questions we think have been answered, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Mike. Three B, our budget calendar, which I think is, for information purposes, is not an action item, but I think the town manager has provided us an outline of this year's budget process, starting in January with the completion of May fifteenth. Are there any questions about this? I assume this will be publicly posted. Any, any questions about the dates that Jeff provided, for any council? Very good. We'll move on to B three C. I believe, Mike, you're here to talk a little bit about the Intersection Project Status Report and Updates. Thank you.
Technology is with me today. Okay, that's showing up on my screen. All right. I, I just wanted to, to give council a brief, kind of like a preliminary introduction of the project, the intersection improvements at Main, Church, and Marsh. This project has been funded through a DECD grant, through the Urban Act funds. And this is the same money that's funding drainage improvements at Millwoods, at Montenegro Field, as well as these intersection projects. And there's basically two hundred, I believe it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars flagged towards the improvements to, to Main, Marsh, and Church. The drawing that you see in front of you is a preliminary plan that was prepared by Luke's Associates that will be the focus of presentation at our public hearing, as Council Martino pointed out, next Thursday evening at seven o'clock in this room. And basically, the, the drawing kind of is oriented where north is to the right. You have Marsh Street coming up from the bottom of the page and Church Street exiting on the top of the page. And again, you know, we all know what the problems are down at, down at the intersection. It's just a wide, vast intersection. It was designed that way and completed the intersection. It was last reconstructed in nineteen ninety-five through a DECD grant that did all the sidewalks and the lanterns and what have you. And it's my understanding, and, and, you know, I haven't been able to verify it, but the intersection supposedly is so wide, and, and that was because Frank Morris, who owned the farm and owned a trucking facility on Broad Street, could not take his could not take his trucks down Broad Street and then go down taking a right on Marsh Street to get to ninety-one. So he would have to come up to this intersection from Broad Street, take a left, uh, on, on Marsh Street, go up to the intersection and do a U-turn with a semi tractor trailer around the flagpole and then come back down Marsh Street and then be able to get onto ninety-one. And that's why the intersection itself was just a, this wide, vast, uh, amount of pavement to be able to accommodate his business. Obviously, the trucking facility is no longer there. Um, there is not a lot of accident history at this, at this intersection. And, uh, you know, our discussions with the police department is it's probably because it's so vast that people are very cautious coming into the intersection. They don't, they just don't know what to do and what to expect from the other drivers. So what this plan is looking to do is to tighten it down to a four-way intersection. That's a much more normal geometry, if you will. And basically, that involves, uh, eleven-foot driving lanes with, uh, five-foot shoulders. Okay, um, so that's basically, basically you end up with two thirty-foot roads that are intersection in a very, you know, uniform four, four ways, or, or four-way intersection layout. At this point, we're still showing the, the turning lane coming from our street going right towards the, the motor vehicles. Um, although we are doing traffic counts to, you know, to verify that that lane is needed. Um, there are obviously several components, um, that we are, you know, have met over the last six to eight months, um, with the Historical Society, for instance. Um, to talk about the flagpole that's there, the, uh, the plantings on the island. There's a, there's actually a bronze plaque monument, um, citing the location of the, of the original meeting house. Um, so we've tried to factor all of these constraints into this, um, preliminary design. Um, and essentially bring that, bring this forward for comment. Now, um, this, you know, I did receive a copy of Mr. Randall's, um, email. Um, this concept basically came from the two thousand eight Milner Report, the old Weathersfield master plan. Um, that plan, the Milner Associates, um, they had actually recommended a roundabout at this location. And we're going to have those planned so that we can present those to the public, uh, next, next Thursday. So everyone can be reminded of what that looked like. Um, but it was the committee's decision to, um, to not recommend the roundabout, to go with a conventional four-way, four-way intersection. I, I think that's, that's basically it. I, I think, you know, what we're going to try and do is outline all of, you know, where, where we've gone, you know, where, where we were before the intersection was improved. All of the things that were kind of looked at, the different configurations and layouts, uh, to get to this point. Um, our traffic engineer, Luke's Associates, has done, um, traffic counts. Um, the, the traffic counts do not warrant this turning into a four-way stop sign intersection. Okay, um, you know, the warrants are there for the two-way intersection that, that exists, uh, today. But I think with the shrinking down of, of the intersection, I mean, you know, in, in a couple cases, some of those corners, the pavement edges of, of the corner radiuses are going to come in twenty-five feet on either side. So you're going to see a, a marked difference of, you know, where, where cars are going to be stopped at stop bars, where the crosswalks are positioned to make it much more safer. Um, you know, there, there are crosswalks that, that come from, you know, in front of Village Pizza to, towards the flagpole. Where there is no sidewalk, there's no handicap ramp at that location. It just, it leads people essentially to an isolated island that they, they couldn't get off of. Um, so there's, you know, was, was a few issues that, that we're, that we're trying to, to deal with. But we wanted to give you, uh, you folks a, you know, a preliminary glance at it so that you can, you know, study it and, and any comments. Um, you know, I, I know Council Martino will be there at the, at the meeting. He's, he's told me that, but.
And also, if I might, one of the other things about having it before you tonight is to get it out there.
Yes.
Get some energy behind it, get some information out there so people, you know, hear about the meeting. Uh, we'll put out the press releases and the notices and so forth, but, uh, this gives people a chance, at least those that watch at home or, or listen to us, um, a chance to hear this. One point on the, uh, you know, the timeframe, we all had an expectation that this would have been done already. But I think we took a lot of time and we got a lot of good information from the Historical Society. Uh, they really helped us with doing some in-depth research on the location of some of these monuments in the intersection. So we knew what was, you know, needed to stay where it was to be accurate, where, what things could move. So that took a lot of time, but we got a lot of good information out of that. So, uh, I, I understand this was supposed to have been accelerated, but, uh, we wanted to make sure we covered those bases first. Cause that's, you know, this is a critical intersection. There are some critical monuments down there that are very important to the community. We expect that we'll have this meeting next week, and if we need more, we can have more. But, uh, this is a very important project to, to Old Weathersfield and the community. We want to make sure we get this right.
I got a couple of questions. So if I'm reading this right, there's stop signs on Church and Marsh, right?
That's correct.
And then what's the minimum distance between a stop sign and say first, your first on-street parking spaces?
Uh, I believe the statute is twenty-five feet.
So is it possible for consideration that when you look north on Main, that you can extend the on-street spaces since they're going to be reworking that corner so they become?
We, we did look at that a little bit. Um, the problem there is not necessarily the, the proximity to stop bars and, and crosswalks. It's the trees. There are several huge trees with very, very shallow root systems that are, that are evident. And, you know, it's the last thing we want to do is, you know, start, start impacting those, those huge, you know, chestnut trees and sycamore trees and stuff.
And then those trees don't pose a health hazard or a safety hazard if they're shallow roots and that big?
No, they're not in the walk area. They're in the area between the sidewalk and the curb.
Right. I mean, I guess the same question.
That curb to, that curb area.
Yeah, I guess the same question still applies though, right? Is it, if the root system's that shallow, are they safe?
They've, they've been there for a hundred and fifty years.
All right.
So.
We, we can ask the tree ward?
Yeah, we can.
You know, for his input.
We'll have him weigh in.
Sure.
I mean, if there's a way, obviously to leave them there and still get some on-street, cause I know it's, there's a desperate need for more on-street parking.
Absolutely.
And then, so the turning onto Main Street going north, currently that exists today around the crosswalk is that green traffic sign? And, you know, that is telling, um, motorists to stop if a pedestrian is crossing?
Yes.
People think that's a stop sign. They stop there all the time.
Okay.
Um, as a, just a matter of not knowing what else to do. And I understand that bringing this together should help some of that because it's going to be closer. However, I'm a little concerned that there wouldn't be consideration of putting the stop sign in and making it a four-way stop. Cause it can be difficult at times to get through that intersection. And especially when the cars coming south on, on Main, they, they stop there. And just don't know what to do. And I, I'm assuming they're not residents, that they're either coming from the motor vehicle department or,
Right.
Um, some other place in town, but they do stop.
Yeah, the, the one thing about stop signs and, you know, you've, you've heard about stop signs occasionally at some of your meetings. Um, that there are very specific warrants when you can put in a stop sign. And it has to do with the traffic volume and accidents and the accidents being able to be cured by the stop sign, uh, things like that. This is a wide open intersection. There's plenty of sight distances. Uh, there is no accident history at all.
Well, that's not true.
Yeah, at, right at the intersection here. Um, nothing that can be solved by a stop sign. But we, we did, we did research on that and we'll be able to talk about that at, at, at the public meeting, so.
And if the warrant, if there is a single warrant that supports a stop sign, we'll take a hard look at that. Absolutely.
Yeah, um, just to the, thinking of the Steve Randall letter that Donna mentioned earlier, is there, 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 this is the area where we, where one of our designated bike routes is. Is there any thought in, along here of any sort of bike lanes and, and along Main Street or?
There are going to be shoulder stripes, which are five feet off the curb, which can serve as the bike lane. Yes.
Okay, so would, do you think it would be designated as bike lane, marked as a bike lane or?
We ha- we haven't marked the, our bike lanes other than signing anywhere in town. And I think that was a recommendation years ago from Kirma. Um, we can certainly revisit that. But I think it would be something that we'd want to do system-wide, you know, for the entire park, bike path.
That's true, that's right. Obviously Hartford has some.
Yes.
You know, up to our border.
Yes, but there, there is sufficient room for bike lanes here.
What's, what's the timeframe, Mike? If this were to continue to progress as now it's going?
Presuming the, the public totally endorses this plan and, you know, gives us the thumbs up, then, uh, we'll, um, tell the engineer to proceed with the final design and bid documents. We'll probably have it out to bid in April or May and possibly construct near the end of the summer.
Only questions yet, Mike?
Thanks, Mike, for the presentation. It looks a lot different on a bigger screen than on a iPad. I was trying to figure it out the other night. So the grayish-green areas then would be, that's what's going away. Um, both at the ends where the new, um, shelves are, I guess, or curving is. And then, um, is there a new island that would be proposed for Church Street?
Yes, he, the, the engineers have shown an island on the Church Street side similar, similar to the island on the Marsh Street side. Um, essentially to align the vehicles there.
Okay. And, um, have we gotten any input from business owners in that area?
But yeah, that's, that's what we're going to be soliciting.
Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay.
You're, you're seeing it first live here.
Thank you.
I think we've got all the questions. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the presentation.
You bet.
And if, if anybody from the public wants to reach out, they can go to that meeting or they can also reach out to you as well, Mike, if they can't make the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a McTurner night.
What's that?
It's a McTurner night.
Okay, uh, we have a bid for A Weathersfield High School renovation project. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the work order with AIG for abatement work at Weathersfield High School for twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Second. We have a motion of second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This work was done over the, uh, Christmas break. It's kind of an emergency abatement. Uh, we discovered some additional areas due to a cracking concrete floor in the girls locker room. We originally had not anticipated, um, doing anything to that floor than putting a ceiling coat and a leveling coat on. But when that happened, uh, the leveling coat shrunk and cracked the concrete that was there, exposing the otherwise encapsulated asbestos. So that had to be abated while the building was closed for the holiday. So, uh, we got a separate bid, uh, from another company other than SMI, cause they were consumed otherwise with the other abatement project that we had scheduled. Uh, this company came in and, and did the work, so.
And all went as expected, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Questions about this? Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Extentions? Thank you. And, um, finally, for A two, which is the, uh, voice phone internet over.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the High School Building Committee and approve the purchase of a VoIP phone system from Broadview Networks for the Weathersfield High School.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and a second in front of us. I know there's, uh, some folks here. Jeff?
Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Keith Raffinello, uh, Head of Technology for the Board of Education, and he can explain this much better than I.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Keith.
We, um, have been exploring our options for voice over IP, which essentially is taking advantage of our internet infrastructure for our phones. Similar to, as a home consumer, we have these, uh, triple play offers from the cable company. We can get phone and internet all over the same, uh, and, and cable all over the same lines. Um, it's similar to what we're looking at for the school district and, and this could be, um, also benefiting the town as well in the future. Where we'll use our existing infrastructure, internet infrastructure to eliminate some of the direct AT&T, which is now Frontier, uh, lines that we've been paying for. So we estimate that we'll save thirty percent annually, um, in what we pay for telecommunications services with this. But we did look at all of our options. We looked at Frontier's option, Avaya, uh, Mitel, Totalcom and Broadview. And, and Broadview really came out head and shoulders above, above the rest. So I have a handouts. There's one for you two.
Thank you.
Broadview is a cloud-based solution. Just like we've, both, uh, the schools in the town have switched to cloud-based email. This is, uh, going to be cloud-based VoIP. And to just give you a point of reference, our current phone system, to use a computer analogy, um, those of you who remember the Commodore sixty-four computer? Yeah, our, uh, our current phone system is, uh, the Commodore sixty-four phone systems. There's no caller ID, there's no, uh, forwarding calls to your cellphone. There's no calling in from the outside to check your voicemail. Uh, there's no getting your voicemails via email. It's a very limited system and it's also a server that's about, well, thirteen years old that lives at our high school. And whenever the phones go down, we have to reboot it. The difference with this, uh, cloud-based system is that we don't own the server. Broadview does. And, um, they are responsible for updating it in the future years. If you look through this document, it does say there's no capital, uh, upfront because Broadview does offer a rent-a-phone option. For the high school, we didn't think this made sense. Uh, it makes more sense to buy the phones. Uh, that way we don't have to pay every month to rent the phones. That's what the forty thousand is, uh, for. We'll own the phones, uh, going forward. And if we ever downsize, if we should, for whatever reason, need less phones at the high school, those phones could be moved to other buildings or to the town offices. I'm not saying that going forward, our goal is to move this phone system to the other six schools and the Stillman Office and, and hopefully the town as well. I know they're, uh, they were hoping that we would choose an option that would work for them, and this option certainly would. Um, maybe in the future it would make sense in some spaces to rent the phones. The advantage of renting them is if we did downsize, we just turn the phone back in and we're no longer paying for it. We don't own that capital. Uh, but as I mentioned, the, when we have this system in place, we'll be able to eliminate our Frontier circuits. And at the high school instantly, it'll save us thirty percent annually. And when we move to the other schools, which we hope to do aggressively and rapidly, uh, we'll save thirty percent district-wide annually on our telecommunications.
Thank you, Keith. Questions for him on this program?
I might make a comment. I, I, um, I agree with Keith. The town hall phones, the community center phones, uh, having linked over the past couple of years, all the buildings with fiber optics, it makes VoIP possible, makes it beneficial. So we're, we're enthusiastic about getting this system up to the high school and looking at how we can deploy this to other buildings in, in the community. So it's a good start for, for everybody. It's part of the project.
If you look at the page that has the, the four phones, I don't know if these pages are numbered. I don't think they are. I apologize for that. But the, um, there's a picture of four phones. The one on the far right, the sixteen-key phone, that's the one that'll go in all of our classrooms. That's the least expensive of the four. And then the twenty-four key phone will go in some of our administrative offices, like the athletic director's office. Um, and then we'll only have two of the forty-eight key phones that those will go in the main office. Uh, we didn't get any of the caller touchscreen LCD phones. Also, uh, just to let you know that it's computer-based, so we log in and when we have a new user, for example, and we hire a new teacher, we just log in, enter their name, enter their extension, uh, what privileges they have, what extensions they have access to transfer to. Um, so it's all computerized and web-based. Um, we'll be managing that. Our tech department will be managing that. That's a change for us. Uh, Mr. Bushy's department in the past has handled the phones. We'll be inheriting that uh, as a technology department now, but we, we're excited about it because this is a, it's a huge jump forward from the Commodore sixty-four.
Just one question in regards to Paul. Um, so this'll allow you to collect some data so you get a better sense of the usage of phone lines and who's using?
Yeah, that's a great question, Donna. Yes, everything, we'll be able to um, track, print reports, um, make sense of where we maybe don't need phones and we could downsize and uh, reallocate resources.
Jeff?
Uh, quickly, on the equipment we're buying, what sort of warranties do we have, will we have on it?
So it's a three-year warranty with the equipment and again, I, I really believe that in some places we, we probably will end up renting some phones, but it's uh, like three dollars per phone, per month, um, rental fee. Um, but the fact that we are buying the phones for the high school gives us some flexibility uh, to move some, some equipment around as we need to.
Thanks.
Yeah, on the chart here, it says uh, not included thirty, you know, thirty-one hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents.
For what we're approving tonight or? Yeah, so there's uh, there's two line items. One is for the equipment and one is for the, uh, the service. We, we're, we have some help upfront with, from the company that, that is helping us install this phone system just to get it configured. Because we're gonna, we have all new switches which you approved, this committee, this council approved, um, in the high school and they're layered switches. So the way it works is our internet will be on one layer, the phone system will be on its own layer. So there's some configuration involved. Um, also just setting up and configuring all the phones initially and offering training to our staff. That's what the six thousand dollars is for. Is that, was that your question, Jerry?
Uh, maybe. I'm looking at forty thousand, five hundred fifty-eight.
That's for the hardware.
Right, and then it says not included thirty-one hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents under monthly total.
Oh, because that's uh, what the Board of Ed will pay.
Gotcha.
That's our uh, monthly fee for the phone service. So three thousand, one hundred ninety times twelve is a lot less than the sixty thousand we're paying at AT&T now per year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Keith? Mike Brown? Thanks, Keith. Uh, you had mentioned starting off at the high school. Uh, it makes perfect sense with the renovation. Possibly expanding to the other schools and still in building. What percentage is it for the high school of phones? Like, you know, is it fifty percent and then, you know, when you go into the elementaries and middle school?
It's a great question. Yeah, we have um, two hundred phones at the high school. We have.
Two hundred?
Yes. We have about a hundred and forty at the five elementary schools combined and about a hundred at the, the middle school. So the high school is about half, just under half of the district.
Okay, so if we ever did look to expand, depends on how much, if we would go with Broadview again, probably a little bit more than forty thousand dollars?
To buy the phones, yes.
Again?
Yes.
To complete the whole?
Complete the whole district. Yes, Mike.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Keith? Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, we have a motion in front of us. Actually, this doesn't require any funding. We're just uh, from us, right? We're just approving this?
This'll come out of the project budget.
Project budget. We need to prove that.
It's over twenty thousand.
Got it. Okay, so we have that motion, a second in front of us. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
I believe we just have the minutes to approve. Um, motion to approve the minutes from January fifth?
Second.
Any changes, deletions, comments? Okay, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I'm staying.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, public comment wishing to speak at the end of the evening? Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, Twenty Copper Mill Road. That oil tank seems to pop up more often now, and let's hope it's all over.
Oh, I hope so.
Um, because I, I can say if, if it's been leaking, uh, and I've seen what leaking oil gasoline tank will do to underground, to water systems, Artesian wells. You see that film right on the top. We are extremely lucky that our neighbors to this property don't have wells. Otherwise, we'd be looking at a serious problem. Uh, you might have known about that leak a long time ago and you wouldn't have known it was even there, or I don't know if you knew it was there. But the fact is, uh, petroleum getting into oil, into water systems isn't very good and, and people that drink it ends up being a health problem. Then of course, we have our continuation of lead abatement going on. On that mess over there at the high school, uh, just keeps costing us more and more. And as I spoke about earlier tonight, uh, about the different costs going on up at the state capitol. Uh, you know, we, we've also seen HART, uh, Hartford area rallies together, having financial problems with their, with their monies. We've seen a Joe Monkey Academy who gets monies. And I know tonight you spoke about your own audit, having uh, some grant problems. You know, it seems like we, we're, we're just surrounded with all kinds of financial problems. And I, I don't know how it's all been, how it all got out of control. But HART, the academy, they shouldn't have had any of these kinds of problems that they have. Yet they're going to walk away. We're going to probably end up picking up the tabs for them. And in the meantime, it's everybody up at the state capitol is getting a good pat on the back for doing a good job. As well as a good salary and a good increase. And um, but over the years, we've seen this going on. And what disturbs me is, I never hear a word from my town council in the town of Weathersfield talking about any of these problems. I never hear any town council member in any town talking about these problems in the press. Yet we all know what's going on. And it's, it's eating away at us financially and morally. Yet you folks are the ones sitting here who have the ability to really make, say something and somebody will listen. I don't know if they'll listen to you at the state capitol. But you certainly are public officials that at least the press hopefully will listen to and speak out about these issues that are going on constantly. And over the term of your, your tenure up here, a lot of that has happened and not a single word. The only thing is, when your funds are cut from the state, then you'll be screaming, not at the cause of the problem, but just that you didn't get your money. And now you have to do something that's not popular. So I, 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 I don't know why you folks don't speak out. You're as quiet as mice. I speak out. I don't care what anybody thinks. But I do my homework and I, I try to, I try to do my homework. I try to, try to have the facts straight. Sometimes I don't. Whether it's my fault or whether it's some misinterpretation, but at least I try. But I don't hear anything from you guys about these issues. And you're our leaders. Our silent leaders. That's what you are. And that's not good. And every town council across this state should be screaming about all this bad stuff going on up at the state capitol. But again, nobody says anything. Everybody goes on to their business and, uh, or, or just ignores what their business that, that they should be doing. So I would urge you to, you know, get up and say something. Newspaper guy is here. He'll take your words. Do you want to let them know up there how, how disappointing we are as citizens of the way they're blowing the money up there? They've extended the credit beyond what they were allowed and they kept spending. I mean, you should be screaming about this. Because some of the money you're getting is coming from those areas. And when you don't get your grants, then you say, well, we didn't get it. Well, why didn't you get it? Because they fooled the money away and you didn't say a damn word. And you should be saying words. You're the officials. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 wait a minute. Uh, I, I know earlier you folks all tell, tell us in the public the things that you've done over the last couple, couple of weeks or since the last meeting. So um, I'd like to share a, a few, few words. Uh, I've had a conversation with Mr. George Rowe not long ago, over the last week. And he's fine. He was sick. Uh, you know, he's, he's up in the age now and he's, he's not as, he's mobile and he gets around very well. But uh, he's just not making it down here and he, he sends uh, uh, his, his hellos to everybody. Uh, I ran into um, Mr. Ed Cardis. Him and I paid a visit to Mr. Uh, Woodrow Warren. Both of those gentlemen used to come up to the podium and talk. Uh, they're now out of circulation to a, a certain degree because of age, but they've still got that fire in them and, and they're doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained, a motion to adjourn? Oh, David, I'm sorry. You walked in. I apologize. You would like to speak? Well, please do. I apologize for missing you. I did see you walk in. I forgot.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, David Kerk, one forty-nine Broad Street. Uh, I was going to talk about one thing, but uh, I was listening, I was watching on uh, public access and I, I'm, I'm thankful to uh, Robert for uh, pointing out about Mr. Rowe because I haven't seen him in here in a while. And I was wondering where, where he's been. And I guess he's been a little bit sick. Uh, so I'm, I'm thankful to know what, what's going on with him. Because uh, there aren't too many people coming here. You know, there's uh, George Rowe. He's not here today. There's uh, Robert here. Did I get the name right? And, and until a few seconds, it was me. And uh, I don't know if the audience knows that, but there was one public speaker here. Only one person here to make any comment. That was Robert. And now there's myself. And uh, you know, it's unfortunate, you know, I wish there was more people here. But um, but the comment I, I, the thing I want to talk about was the intersection of uh, Main Street, Marsh Street. Uh, I was watching the presentation and I think uh, that is something that has been needed for decades. I remember when I first drove into that intersection, uh, in the mid eighties and I, I had my uh, Datsun two-ten hatchback, nineteen seventy-eight. And I didn't know what to do. I, I went into the intersection. I did, I had to stop because I didn't know, there was no stop sign. But I stopped because I, I, I was looking for cars. I didn't know what to do. And uh, it, it, I waited for clearance and I went. You know, that, that is a very tricky intersection, especially if you're from out of the town. Because uh, like one of the other speakers, I don't know who it was, uh, maybe it was Donna Hedman, uh, when you're, when I stop by the intersection, frequently you see people who have the right of way, who have no stop sign, they just stop because they, they don't know if they should go or stop. So that, that uh, for, for all my lifetime, that's been a uh, confusing intersection. And sometimes I'm not sure if someone's going to stop or if they're going to go. So I, I think maybe that's why there hasn't been an intersection, the accident, accident in that intersection for a while because people are confused. They don't know if they should stop or go, so they stop. I know there has been an accident just past that intersection and I don't know how much uh, that intersection had to, uh, how much that intersection had play in that accident. But uh, I know it was a tragic accident on a, on a rainy day one night. But um, um, I, I'm, I agree with uh, the proposal. I don't know if it went through the planning and zoning. I didn't follow everything completely. I don't know if it went through the planning and zoning or if it was approved or, or, or whatnot. But uh, that intersection is very tricky. And um, it's about time that they do, did something about that intersection. Well, I hope they do something about that. And I, and I, wherever it goes through next, I don't know if it's going to be planning and zoning or if it's something else, I will support it. Because that intersection is a very, I, I've never seen any intersection like that in my life. It, it, it's like you have two stop signs on two sides, other two you don't, but it's so wide, you're not sure if you're supposed to stop or you're supposed to go. And if you have to take a left-hand turn, you're not sure if you're supposed to stop. It, it's just too tricky. Um, one other thing, uh, one other member of the uh, council mentioned, Michael. Uh, on the uh, Main Street, that grocery store, uh, there's, I can't remember, I've only been in Weathersfield for sixteen years. I uh, I don't know if there was a grocery store on Main Street, the, in old Weathersfield before that, but uh, Donna, I don't know if you know if there was?
There was. Where Village Pizza is, there was a market.
But uh, it's come back and um, unfortunately, I forgot about it until I watched on TV and I saw Michael mention the grocery store. I've never been there because I, I forgot all about it. And uh, I like to, to uh, support that store because, you know, uh, for a long time, we've had that uh, saying, uh, support local businesses. Uh, I don't know what the, what the saying really was. But you know, we should support local businesses. It might be a little bit more, but uh, since I live so close, I believe I support, I should support local businesses. And uh, thanks, Michael, for mentioning that. I forgot all about it. And I, I hope they stay in business for a while. Uh, thanks.
Thank you, David.
David, can I say something? There'll be another, on the intersection project, we're just starting a public information process. So next Thursday night at seven, there'll be another public meeting on this. You can get a deep look at the plans and make more comments. We'll make sure we get you that information for that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't miss anybody. Motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.